Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:35. May I have a roll call, please? Butcher.
Here.
Crusen.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Livia Wright. Here. I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight at our meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on to item 3.0, approval of agenda. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote, please. Butcher.
Yes.
Crusen.
Yes.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright. Aye, motion carries. We're on to item 4.0, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, and as a reminder for those who may be watching, consent agenda are usually just technical approvals, so these tend to be things like the final consent on hiring contracts and things like that. So may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Crusen.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Harold.
Aye.
Livia Wright. Aye, motion carries. And we are on to 5.0, board update. Tammy, would you like to provide an update today?
I just want to congratulate all of our seniors and wish them luck in their future endeavors and say how exciting it was to swing a sledgehammer at a wall at Sand Creek to help get that little project started and let everybody know that 3B is on its way successfully. So, thank you, community, for that.
I echo those sentiments, watching the 3B funds being put into place and all the changes that'll be taking place over the summer. I also met with Martina and Nancy Lamond over a couple of weeks ago and learned more about the McKenney Vento program, which is for our students that do not have homes or they're displaced. And what I find every time I meet with these, with people, with these experts, is that there's another little program that I knew nothing about, but it positively impacts key students within our district and does so much for them. And I think that we have a lot of those little programs, so I would recommend people, you know, get to know these programs and be supportive.
As the rookie, second meeting, a little wet behind the ears still, still learning, but what a joy to be a part of graduations across the board. Just young people and parents and loved ones, just supporting them, especially as they were crossing the stage, sometimes a little more non-professional in sort of their dances and whatever they did, but just the joy that they had of accomplishing something and then the families hooting and hollering for them. It was really neat and just a joy to see that.
It is a lot of fun. Makes you want to come back.
Here I am.
Okay, good, good. Well, welcome.
Not scared, dude.
Yeah, not scared. Please be nice to the gentlemen. No, I just, it's a great district and I really am glad to be here. Thank you all.
In addition to the graduations, which were fantastic, and the joy is infectious and contagious, even though it's a long day, it's really fun to go home at the end of that day, having seen all those bright faces and the promise that is represented there. One of the things I really appreciated about this year was a tradition that Sand Creek High School started, where they actually went out and walked the elementary schools in their zone. And I know many of you responded to that. We got great community response to that. To me, what a fantastic example, and that's a cultural innovation. So I was really proud of the Sand Creek High School community and the vision that they had and the execution with which they pulled that off. And I'm hopeful that we'll see that, I'm hopeful we'll see some green and gold and some black and blue from Vista walking around elementary schools in about a year, because it's great for our youngers to see the big ones as they are finishing the route. Very proud of that. I'm also very proud that our district continues to attract outstanding leaders, people who share our culture. And so I'm going to introduce one who has joined us. So I'll ask Sue Holmes if you will stand up. Sue is joining us as the leader of the Falcon Zone. So would you welcome her to District 49? As an Alaska boy and that rural Alaska country boy, I really like that Sue comes to us from Peyton and Cripple Creek and beautiful Beano Vista and really understands that part of our community, but also comes to us from the world of education and the professional side of education. So we are really blessed to have her and excited to see where the Falcons Zone will go. So, welcome, Sue.
So, every time we get to this time of year, some casual acquaintances or whatever will ask me, "Do I get the summers off?" And, no. Yeah, this is like getting to the busiest time of year for us. We have two short months, as Jack will affirm and probably even make it sound even worse. Two short months to get stuff ready, to get ready for next year. We have the end of our fiscal year here on June 30th, so we had auditors in here this week to get ready for the end of that process. So there's a lot, a lot, lot that goes on here in the district office during these next couple of months, so, thank you.
Is that a call to extend the summer?
Second.
Yeah, I can echo what Brett said. It's kind of neat going out and seeing the status of a lot of the schools one week after school is out. If you go to some of them now, especially if you make sure you bring a hard hat and some safety glasses, because you might need it. But it kind of makes me a little bit nervous knowing that we have to get this done and be back operational by, you know, the first part of August. But, you know, I was kind of sad, you know, missing our graduations, but I had graduation of my own, so I got to experience with my daughter of going through, you know, this dinner, this dinner and the celebration. So it's kind of neat to be able to see it. It's always fun, you know, just seeing the kids, just their response of how they handle, you know, that milestone in their life. And another thing, just as a side note, it's really kind of neat seeing the difference that we get to make as a district, you know, not only in, you know, our own district, but also nationally. And one of the things is we're part of a, one of our school dude operating systems, I'm on their advisory board, there's really 10 selected out of 6,500 school districts that get to share input with them on things that are going to be impacting us in a very short period of time. So it's neat that we get to use some of the input that Peter and I had talked about a little bit on the system with the school dude folks back in San Diego that now are on their plate to make a difference, you know, in a very short period of time. And so it's kind of neat that we get to make a difference not only locally, but also nationally.
Okay, and with that, I'd just like to also remind everyone to fill out the evaluation forms at the end of the meeting and make sure you get them back to Donna. And we are now on to our open forum. And as Brett is bringing me the list, I will give our general spiel. "We appreciate and welcome comments on school operations and programs in District 49 as part of tonight's open forum. Please speak into the microphone and state your name before beginning. We ask that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. Personal complaints against any individual connected with the school system are prohibited. Follow-up actions may be assigned to the appropriate chief officer depending on the nature of the comments. In accordance with Board policy BEDH, public participation is limited to three minutes per person. Thank you for participating in our open forum. It is also the practice of the Board to withhold any Board comment until all people who have signed up to speak have spoke, have had that chance to speak. And then we, in general, will give any advice or assign things to our chief officers. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our District 49 community and guides the community member through the correct people to help resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board. We encourage you to utilize this process as many have found, have successfully resolved their concerns this way." So, and with that, we have Lexi Remy, homeschool enrichment.
We have a number of people here for the Falcon Homeschool Issue, and we'd like Michelle to speak first, if that's all right.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Godown. I'm actually here, thank you for the time to speak as well. I'm here to represent a, to present a letter that was signed by 27 members of the Falcon Homeschool Enrichment Program, parents representing even more kids, because most of them have more than one child in the program. So I'd just like to read the letter, and that might actually take up all my time, so. "To the District 49 Board Members, there is information released recently confirming the relocation of the Falcon Homeschool Enrichment Program from their current home in the Mohawk Building to a temporary home at BLPA, before being moved to a permanent space in a new school yet to be constructed. We, the undersigned, would like to express our disappointment in this decision for the following reasons. We choose to educate our children at home for myriad reasons. One being a degree of separation from the general public school structures and population. The FEP program worked well for many of us precisely because of the physical separation that it boasted. We didn't have to worry about the safety issues that often occur in buildings with middle and high school students, or that our children would be in proximity or share facilities with older students and staff that we do not know or trust. The feeling of the Mohawk Building was small, intimate, and mimicked the home-like atmosphere of learning that we are trying to foster. All of this is gone the minute you move the program into a large school structure and population. The students and staff worked very hard to design the building in a way that makes learning fun, comfortable, and fits the unique needs of the program. The interior decor is bright and colorful and handpicked. The brand-new playground was one that the students, at two years old, I think, was one that the students and teachers worked very hard to earn themselves, and the track put in this year was enjoyed very much by the students for the month or two that they got to use it. It's a shame to take all these wonderful amenities away from the students and staff who worked so hard together to put them there. The building will go from serving over 250 students a week to serving about 30, which seems like a waste of resources. I've read the proposal, and I understand the arguments for it, that it allows high needs or expelled or preexpulsion students who would have been bused 45 minutes away to continue to remain in the district. And I understand that it would be good for those families. However, there are over 250 students that we feel it will affect negatively, in our view, and their rights are just as important, are they not? We find it disturbing, especially that there was no town hall or forum, or even notification about this decision. In the video on YouTube of the March 22nd, 2017 Board of Education meeting, at about the 2 hour 30 minute mark, Board Member John Graham advocates for FEP and recommends a tall town hall, as he says that he foresees apprehension from parents about the move. Peter Hiltz responds by smirking a little and says nothing. I personally found this trip, this clip extremely disturbing. Was there ever a town hall offered to discuss parent concerns? A forum? An email asking for feedback? If there was, and we missed it, then I apologize. But the parents that I have spoken to do not remember ever being formed of this possible decision until it was already apparently made. We pay taxes and we vote in this district, even though our children use up only a portion of the resources that you receive for their attendance. We believe that you should, that we should have been allowed to have input into this decision, and we do highly resent the fact that it was made by the Federation."
Thank you.
Would you like the signatures?
Yes, you can give them to the board secretary, please. And our next speaker is Lexi Remy.
Hi, my name is Lexi Remy. I'm 10 years old, and I have been homeschooled for two years now. I've been going to Falcon Homeschool Enrichment Program for a year now. And I haven't always been homeschooled. I went to a public school for four years. I did not like it because I was teased, I was bullied, I was accused of things that I didn't do. So I was worried about going into FEP originally, because I was worried that it would be like that public school environment. But it wasn't, and I was very happily surprised. So, I feel that moving to this high school is not a great idea for us, the students, because if we move, we will have everything that we had in the public school. And I'm concerned that the, that the high schoolers will think of us as odd, strange, different, abnormal kids. And I'm worried that they'll tease us and make fun of us, and bully us, and try to make us do things that we don't want to do. And I'm concerned about that, and I'm sure that I'm not the only one. As a kid, I am concerned about the social aspect, and I'm also concerned about not having a playground right away. I really, really hope that you will reconsider your decision to move us. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Remy?
My name is Stacy Remy. You just heard from my daughter. I am a former Air Force JAG. I am a former owner of a litigation consulting business, so obviously I'm an attorney. I gave all of that up to homeschool my child based on the fact that there was not a school in D-11 or D-49 that could meet my child's needs. She is exceptional in so many ways. And while the resources are there for students who struggle, the resources are not there for students who are exceptional. I gave all that up to homeschool her. So you'll find that homeschool parents are extremely involved in their child's lives. As such, we expect to be extremely involved in programs such as the enrichment program, which are offered for us. We pay the same taxes that every other person in this district does who has their children using the resources of the district, and yet our students use very little of those resources. At minimum, we expect to be consulted when decisions are made that directly affect our students. We never received any information that this move was being contemplated. When I was in District 11, the one thing that they did do very well was if something was affecting the students of one school, those parents were individually notified that there was something going to happen that would affect their school. They were invited to either comment via email, to meet with Board members, to attend Board meetings, and to go to town halls. I didn't see that here, and I was very disappointed with that. So, in that aspect, I would hope that you would at least reconsider the decision and put it off until you've heard. We've had an opportunity, as a school, as a program, to be heard about what we think about this. On this second point that I have is that I think it is wholly inappropriate to put children that are in this age group, we're talking elementary up to, you know, six, seven, homeschool's different, into a high school environment. I think that's wholly inappropriate to put children of that age into an environment where there's so many differences socially, cognitively, emotionally. The information they could hear from those students, the kinds of words they could hear are something that we have, as a whole, tried very hard to protect our students from. We're in charge of when our students get to hear that information, when our children are exposed. To put them in a high school environment, I feel is completely inappropriate and would ask you reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizzie Schroeder is our next speaker.
My name is Elizabeth, and I am 11 years old. I have been going to the Falcon Homeschool Enrichment Program since first grade. And with, and every year, within two weeks, I make a ton of friends. All of my experiences with the teachers, lessons, field trips, and kids have been amazing. FEP has been in this building ever since it very first started, and not only are minds lit up and friendships made, but memories are also collected. I can still remember when we were working towards that playground. Over the summer after we earned it, the teachers and families came in and built it themselves. At the new building, the schoolyard is not fenced in, which can make some kids and their parents nervous and uncomfortable. We usually get three recesses per day at our current building, but at the new building, we currently don't have a dedicated playground for our program, which means we could, we would either have no playground or have to share one with another group, which could possibly mean less recess. If we do share one with another group, some of the kids could get teased or bullied, and that has never happened at our other building. It is important to have lots of time outside so that we can goof off for a while and get exercise and fresh air, so that it is easier to pay attention to learning in the classroom when it is time to. Those aren't the only reasons why I think we should keep our building. The move is inconvenient for tons of families, including my own. Moving can be especially difficult for kids that take a while to adjust. Some kids are worrying about getting lost in the much bigger building, and their parents are worrying about their safety, such as mixing homeschool kindergarten through seventh graders with public school high schoolers. I know that not all high schoolers are mean, but some don't make good choices and can be intimidating to younger children. In other words, our building is smaller, easier to get around, cleaner, and safer. It's also a good idea to keep our building because it is peanut tree nut free, which is a huge factor with, for kids with life-threatening allergies. Sharing a building with 600 kids instead of 60 would make it much harder to protect these kids. The community feel of the Falcon Homeschool Program develops through a mix of the great teachers and the safe home-like atmosphere of our building. With a possible building move and all these worries, lots of kids that love FEP might not be able to ever go again, and I'm one of those kids. Plus, we were here first, weren't we? Shouldn't we have first dibs? Why are you giving it to the other program? That building is like our program's home. So please, hear our voice of protest and give us back our building.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Niva Harold.
My name is, excuse me, Niva Harold. I am a neighbor of this district's building, and I'm here to talk about, actually, it's early, but about the Falcon Marketplace using this frontage road as one of the two main ways to get in and out of that shopping center. Actually, as a neighbor, obviously, I am not happy about increased traffic, noise, lights, et cetera. But the reason I'm here is I read in the New Falcon Herald that the school district was excited about another, having another option of getting buses out into the community. And what I've seen so far, again, it's early, is that using this frontage road, there'll be a roundabout getting into the shopping center, and then on the other side of East and Bill, another roundabout going out. So the school bus would have to go through there, and I haven't seen any traffic route other than parking, because the Bill along Woodman and Meridian, the retail buildings are going to be backing up, so it's not like there's a road going around behind them. It may change, but if that is the case, it doesn't seem to me that it really would be very safe or efficient having school buses going through the parking lot of the shopping center. Just food for thought.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker. And so, Peter, can you address the concerns that we heard regarding the programs?
Possibly, but I can definitely honor them. To the parents and the students, I appreciate you guys coming here. I think one of the, one of the things that we don't always do well is anticipate how a decision might be, might impact. And I will acknowledge fully, I think there was a stronger emotional connection to the location you have than I recognized. And I will tell you that part of my underestimating that was simply that we've moved, this move involves seven programs, and all but two of them have moved within the last couple of years because we've been shifting things around. And we haven't had this level of concern from any of the other moves, including part of the homeschool program. So I apologize for not anticipating what it would feel like to be displaced. I recognize in particular the two concerns. It's not small to me, and it's not, it's not a minor thing that the investment in the playground matters. And so I want, I want parents to know, we have, we have asked for a bid, in fact, I think we got it today, about moving that, we actually asked for a bid to replace the exact same, or to recreate the same playground in another location. But we also asked for a bid for relocating the same playground, because we recognize that that's meaningful, and that's something that we, that is a response that we can make. The other thing that I am aware of, and it's, I kind of heard it more strongly tonight, including from both of the students, the idea about the connection or the proximity to older students, that's actually something that I managed in another, when I was in leadership with the Classical Academy's Cottage School, which is their homeschool program, which also was displaced into a co-located setting. And so I have some personal experience, both as a homeschool parent and as a homeschool administrator, with what you can do when you have co-location. There are a lot of ways that we think we can be responsive to those concerns, but we haven't, we haven't listened well to those concerns. So I want to hear more about the, not only the student perspective, particularly the perspective about the fear about being bullied or being in proximity to older students, but also the parent perspective. But I think the big thing that the Board heard from me the first time we talked about this is, this wasn't really about displacing the homeschool program. We really were trying to give more services to seven programs. I did not emphasize this the last time, I will tonight. The homeschool program, there's more demand for the program that we provide than we can meet in its current location, in part because of the septic field there is maxed. We simply can't get permission or permits to educate more children there. We can in the, in the location that we're anticipating as, as the permanent destination. So there are things I did not communicate well. I apologize to you, Board, because I recognize that you have to lead even when we don't execute well. And to the families, I apologize for not anticipating the way this would come across. I will also ask you to recognize there were other children and other families who were being excluded from services, and I don't compare the numbers to the disruption. I recognize it's a small number of students that will be served better in the Mohawk facility, but I think a pure numerical calculation is inappropriate for them as well. And so that is part of what we were considering when we made the decision about which programs to place where. Going forward, I think the two main concerns that I heard were outdoor space, the security and the familiarity of the outdoor space, as well as the security and essentially the being separated from the other students in the same building. So those would be my primary takeaways from the public forum tonight, and then I would be interested if the Board has other things that you would ask me to focus on or direct.
Comment from anyone?
I think that we do need to work better at the communication when students and parents are affected. So that is something where having open forums, whether it's called a town hall or something else, we can do better at. And it doesn't just have to come from you. You know, we have the leaders of the homeschool program, we have the zone leader as well that could also do that, reach out and inform parents. And basically, there should be a timeframe where they're being informed, invited to speak, share their thoughts, concerns, and also as the community's being invited, kids are being invited too, students are being invited too. So, I know some of that took place, but maybe not from the higher levels. But we just have to keep in mind that we have to include the community input, the public input, the affected stakeholders' input.
I would just like to have some follow-up back on some of the concerns that were brought up about, you know, the separation and the, and the safety concerns, just some follow-up on how that's going to look, because I am unfamiliar with how housing two different programs like that coexist, so I would also like to just have a little follow-up on what that's going to be like for them.
I'd just like to do two things. One, thank you for the respectful approach that you gave us. We really appreciate that. We make mistakes, and sometimes things happen, and just, I want to appreciate, let you know how much I appreciate the respect. And the young ladies that spoke, well done.
Peter, do you have what you need to move forward and then come back to us?
As long as y'all reserve the right to give me additional direction. So, I appreciate the correction. I also, I make mistakes, and I apologize sincerely. I did not anticipate the level of emotional connection to the site, and that's a flaw on my side. But I also anticipate that the Board is going to need to give me some, some other specific direction. I'm not, I'm not just trying to be responsive to what has happened. It didn't go well, but I take Mr. Graham's counsel to heart. I think there's probably a process that we can either learn from a neighboring district or develop that would have preempted this in a future set of decisions. And I anticipate we'll keep having opportunities to, to collect input. So I take that, take that correction well, but I think you're probably going to need to give us more details as we go forward as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got one more thing. From our students that spoke, I did take that you guys are concerned with interactions with older kids and from the parents, improper interactions with older kids. You know, and I heard the word, you know, being picked on and bullying, and I, I just challenge again, as a parent and as a member of the D-49 community, that all of our leadership... our leadership, all of our staff, all of our teachers would work very hard to prevent kids from being picked on, to prevent bullying at every level. So that's part of, you know, our compass where we're respectful and treating others, you know, the way we want to be treated, using the golden rule, so to speak, and all that other stuff. Well, we need as leaders in the district to make sure that parents, students, teachers, staff have the tools to prevent bullying and things like that.
Any further comment? Okay, then let's move on to item seven point oh, our action items, please. And as a general rule, we have discussed these at our prior work sessions, so we tend to move through these items fairly quickly. Our first item is seven point oh-one, election of board officers, as we have the vice president's seat currently empty. So do we have any nominations for vice president?
I would like to make a motion to nominate John Graham for vice president.
I would second that motion.
John, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Do we have any further nominations? Then may we have a vote? Yep, go ahead.
I would just like to thank John for, first off, running for election and doing this job. I know it is a lot and it takes a lot, so I really appreciate it. And I thank you so much for being willing to step up and do the role of vice president.
So with that, can we have a vote to confirm John Graham as vice president? Butcher?
Yes.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. And legally, he's not allowed to abstain, so he did have to vote for himself.
Almost said no.
Yeah, then we all just like, you know, you'd have been in trouble with me later. That's okay. All right, and as we have now filled all offices, we don't need any further motion on that item. So may we move on to seven point oh-two, action on course revisions at Vista Ridge?
After discussion at the prior board meeting, I moved to approve the name change and assigned credit to the pathways exploration designs mastery courses as described in item seven point oh-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item seven point oh-three, approval of policy revisions.
After a first reading at the previous board meeting, I moved to approve the two policies and item seven point oh-three is recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item seven point oh-four, reauthorization of the contract between District Forty-nine and the Community Partnership for Child Development Head Start Program.
I moved to approve the contract between District Forty-nine and Community Partnership for Child Development for twenty sixteen seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Excuse me. Yep, seventeen eighteen, I'm sorry. Oh, right. So withdraw the motion, please.
I withdraw my motion and I'd like to make a new motion.
Second.
I moved to approve the contract between District Forty-nine and Community Partnership for Child Development for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to seven point oh-five, action on revised job description, special education data technician.
I moved to approve the revisions to the special education data technician job description is recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote. Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item seven point oh-six, act on the, action on the teacher's salary schedule.
I moved to approve the salary schedule presented in item seven point oh-six as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is just a, a small change off of what we approved last month because as we went through and did the placement of every single individual on, on the, on the new schedule, we recognized a couple of limitations that that schedule had, had presented. And so as you see that this, this version extends the steps down a little bit and extends the line, what we call the line that, that we threw the schedule down a little bit to make sure that again, that the primary goal, which, that no one would receive any material harm from this, from this change would, would be able to be accomplished, so.
Okay, any other comment? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight point oh is information items for the board. I don't think we have anything we need to address on there. And so we're going to go on to nine point oh discussion items. And we have had a request, as it is in addition summer, that we have the teacher compensation task force here. They're currently listed at the very end of the agenda. And so we've had a request to move them up to our first discussion item. So if we, as if everyone agrees, we'll move them up and allow them to get done early and then come be able to head back home. Okay, so Matt, can you forward it for them? It is their summer break.
We're excited to bring this, this discussion item to you, especially because we have some teachers here that will be able to interact with you and, and, and give you their feedback and, and, and observations on, on how the process went. And so first off, Peter and I will just set the table a little bit here with, with some of what happened. Basically, in summary, we had three meetings with the teacher compensation task force. The, the task force was comprised of thirty-six teachers, two from every school. Every school had a, a veteran representative and everyone had a, a probationary representative on that. So we had a good balance of the entire population. We considered a lot of things and we'll, and I'll show you a little bit more about the, the permanent, the long-term plan in a second. But this first slide here is the, is the first results or the first fruits, I should say, of the two thousand sixteen three B election process that again, had the first priority of providing some better compensation opportunities. The annualized target, if you recall on that, was to be a million dollars and be available for the teachers for that. That is available to all teachers in the district. So we have, of course, the coordinated school pool then, and then the school available to charter schools. But for this first year, again, if you recall, that we were kind of in a transition between the old bond levy and the new eventual mill levy, and it's kind of, and, and almost a half and half, and it's technically a forty-one percent, fifty-eight percent mix this year. And so that pro-rata share of the million dollars, being the forty-one percent of the million dollars, creates a pool this year of four hundred eleven thousand, three hundred sixty dollars to be distributed again amongst all of the schools and all of the teachers in the district. The teacher compensation task force endorsed an idea to just, to simply remit that in a one-time payment to all teachers in the coordinated schools. And so this, this math kind of shows you how that plays out because the four hundred eleven thousand dollars has to also cover the associated benefit costs, which are really are just para and Medicaid. But again, those are, those are big items. As you can see, they're twenty-three percent of the, of the, of the total that has to be considered. So that left us with a, a net number after, after going through the total pool, down to the coordinated school portion, into the gross pay portion of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. We had approximately eight hundred ninety-two licensed staff eligible for that payment. And so that rounds down to a gross number of three hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then the benefits portion is the difference between gross and the net. And that's going to be an average net. Not everyone will receive the same. It depends on what decisions they've made in, in terms of their own withholdings and things like that. So, but it should, it should average out to that, that amount. So that's a fun thing and we are, and we are processing this payment on this next paycheck. So next week on June fifteenth, when that comes out, there'll just be that little bit of, little bit of sweetener in there. Any questions on that?
You said that the payout per person is two eighty-three or is it three sixty-seven?
The gross, their gross pay amount will be three sixty-seven and then para will be applied to that and, and also the, the Medicaid costs. And if they have any particular income tax withholdings that may affect that as well, so.
And that is annually or monthly?
This is a, this is a one-time payout for June only.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll get to the future scenario here in a minute. And so that's why, you know, it should average out to around two hundred eighty-three dollars, but again, some people may be less, some people may be a little bit higher. So spreadsheets tell the information, right, as ugly as they are. Again, this was a really great process that we went through with the teaching group and and Peter's going to share you a little bit about how we went through some survey process and everything to get feedback from you and the group beyond the thirty-six individuals we had, we interacted with. But I'll give you kind of this final answer and then we'll go back through how, how we've gotten there. Again, so this is the, this is the go-forward amount where we start with this million dollars. We have the distribution between the charter schools and the coordinated schools. Again, that's seventy-six percent to twenty-three percent. So we create this seventy, seven hundred sixty-two thousand dollar pool on the coordinated school side. What we came up with was what a plan that we called the five-five-ninety plan, and we put it in that order because if you say ninety-five-five, people don't know if that's ninety-five and five or ninety-five and five. So five-five-ninety. And because the ballot language was pretty clear on, on the fact that this was to attract and retain highly effective teachers, we knew that there needed to be something and about pure, pure, the pure attract portion of that, of how we are bringing teachers into the district, but then also then how are we retaining teachers? And so the five-five-ninety pool idea identifies this five percent pool for attract, a five percent pool that we call the retain award pool, meaning there will be some opportunity for school leadership, zone leadership to determine how they would like to recognize and, and use funds for, for current staff. And then the retain slash choice pool. And what this means is that every teacher basically will have the opportunity to decide how they want to receive the benefit from, their, their benefit from this. So if we focus on that pool being the largest share, the ninety percent, you can see that that comes down to six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, we have an estimate of what that would mean in terms of, you know, the, the pay available portion versus the benefit, the benefit portion of that. What we then also, what we then contemplated was how to distribute this. Do we distribute this on a fixed dollar amount for every teacher? So it's every teacher's getting the exact same dollar amount? Or do we distribute it on a fixed percentage amount that would be relative to their, their salary on the placement on the salary schedule? We did survey on us in this and there's a lot of information, a lot of interesting information about that. What we, what we arrived at is to really have a fifty-fifty split of that. So we'll take fifty percent of that pool and make it equivalent for every teacher and the other fifty percent will be late, you know, relative to their placement on the salary schedule. So that creates a window, so not everyone will get the exact same money, but it will be a tighter window than it would be if it was all percentage-based. Okay? We also, so that's what the fifty-fifty in these boxes are here. The big boxes that are on the bottom of this page represent after-tax opportunities or before-tax opportunities, and really you should say it's compensation versus perhaps a benefit option. So again, we, the teachers in the end wanted to be able to have the option of, if we want to put this into our HSA account or we want to do a 401K match, that can be done as a pre-tax option, then they can receive a pre-tax benefit to that. If they choose to do it as a compensation, they want, they want to receive a cash payout, then they, they will have, will have that, but that, the benefit cost affects it differently and all still has to fit in this same pool of money. Okay? So if that's enough on the details on this, again, the, the, I want you to get, I want to get more up to the, to the teachers and having them interacting with you than, than just me. But the other thing to note is that we, we are driving this as a calendar year program, so it ties in well with the rest of our benefit programs. So the open enrollment time that comes in, in November, this would be when those decisions were made about how each teacher would like to receive that benefit in the coming year. And then they would, that would start in January first. That does well in terms of tying, of matching the, you know, the income tax year, of course, being a calendar year, our benefit year being a calendar year. And it also ties to the fact that the collections that we get for this program are all springtime collections in terms of the revenue sources. So all those pieces kind of together really aimed to us having a calendar year program on this going forward. Peter?
So I will not go into detail on any of these slides because these slides related to the survey that we did really represent teacher perspective and we have teachers here. And so would, would those of you that were on the task force join me? Just come on up here because if they have questions, I'm going to ask y'all to be first responders. What I, what I will say to preface the teacher participation component of our program is that we had an opportunity two years ago with the two thousand fourteen election where our community said, let's, let's do something about compensation and let's increase compensation. And then we had a teacher compensation task force that helped us make two really good decisions. One was to put some of that money into the general pool to try to maintain our level of competitiveness. The other was to use that money to enact the repositioning program that you all supported and that Brett and his team have implemented. And so that was really good insight from our teachers. Well, here once again, our teachers have given us really good insight and what we are learning is that when we listen to the teachers on things that impact teachers, they give us sometimes unexpected direction. And I, I think that the plan that we ended up with is not the plan that Brett and Paul Anderson and I would have developed if we had sat off by ourselves in, in a room somewhere. And so the, the survey that we developed really addressed all of the points that Brett just went through. It addressed how do we distribute it? When do we distribute it? Do we distribute it before tax or after or give people an option? There was a lot of detailed conversation. There were some places where we think that the teachers' conversations improved the survey. They gave us better resolution or detail. And then other places where when we surveyed the large group of teachers and we had well more than five hundred teachers participate in the large survey, we got back some results that surprised us a little bit, basically compared to the conversations that we had had. So rather than expecting that we understand what your questions might be, how about if y'all fire up questions, I step back and the smart representatives of the smart teacher group that represented the whole teacher staff share with you their experience of it.
I just wanted to know after you've gone through this process and you've brought it back to your different representative groups, are they happy with the results?
I'm not even going to pretend. Okay. So I think at Sand Creek, we have a very split between veteran teachers who have been in the district a long time and then new teachers who, like me, who are, you know, just getting started in our careers. And I think the biggest thing was that, that difference between doing the combination of both the fixed and the percentage was incredibly beneficial because not one party was left out. And you kind of get where y'all all did the head nod like, yeah, that makes sense. And I think that's what our staff did as well. So for us, it was much better received than one way or the other.
I'm Bonnie Bonzer and I am in the Sand Creek Zone at Remington Elementary. You want me to answer the same question then? I think that the proposal, the end proposal was very satisfactory. I didn't hear any, anything negative about how that turned out. It made sense to the teachers and the discussion that went into forming that, I felt was very well-led by Peter and Brett and Paul. And so they did a good job informing us so that we could make some really good choices.
I'm Margaret Jurick. I'm at Vista Ridge High School. The process was fantastic. I mean, I have to say, when, when we first started- I mean, I have to say when, when we first started it, when I first went back and surveyed my, my colleagues, a lot of it was just give us the money. We're not sure what's going to happen. We know that's set in stone if you just give us the money. Then through the discussions that we had about what do, what do you consider compensation? And then they started thinking about it's not just the money, it's the benefits, it's some non-tangibles. They, they started going, oh, wait, we, we do have other things. And then I, we started talking about the, the pre-tax versus post-tax. And, oh, if I do pre-tax, I get a little bit more money, you know, that I can then have work to become even more money. So it was a good process. I was at a training on Monday and Tuesday and it reminded me that we also have another benefit that we haven't really advertised, but we know it, is D-49 doesn't charge us in order to get credit for moving up the scale. The, the other district that I was in, they charged fifty-five bucks a credit to do that. And we get that without having to pay for it.
You mean for furthering education?
Yes. Continuing education stuff. So I think one thing we need to do though is be better about advertising for that attracting and retaining part. You know, we may not have the highest salaries in the city, but we have a lot of benefits that are kind of hidden right now. Need to get them out there where everybody can see them.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Danforth. I am high school at Spring Studio. And I have to first tell you that, and I think Brett and Peter alluded to this, that we have some really creative people out there. Some of the ideas that made it onto this ideal list that then we were able to bring back to the group, some of them were a little crazy. Some of them were really wow. But overall, everybody knew that we needed to differentiate for the adults, just like we do for our kids. The other thing I think that really speaks out or stands out amongst what we, we as the teacher compensation task for, task force did, we were able to go to our teachers, our colleagues, and they were much more comfortable talking to us. I heard some really positive, I heard some really negative. But I heard from them and I don't think that's something that they might have said in a more public forum. And I think where we see that is that there were what, almost five hundred fifty staff members replied to a survey that was not necessarily anonymous. And so we really did truly get the largest, one of the larger responses. So when you see these numbers and you see all of this in here, you can rest assured that it was through a lot of good conversation. It was through a lot of small conversation, larger conversation, and it really does represent the majority of, of the teachers.
Anything, do you have something?
Yes, I do. So what I'm hearing you, from you is input from teachers on issues that affect teachers is very important. And to me, that's a stakeholder engagement process. And that stakeholder engagement process may be more important than the outcome. Everybody's happy or everybody's not happy. It's the fact that everybody or everybody who wanted to be heard was heard. And in that process, you were able to come up with ideas that you may not have thought about. So I would say that we just identified at least, maybe not scale-wise, stakeholder engagement process that works. And we can use that every time we have major issues that affect teachers or a particular school or particular stakeholders within the community. Okay, to some extent or another, because sometimes timelines aren't the same as we had here. And I think that insight and, and the, what the teachers shared is reflected in the, the graphs. And I won't go through all the graphs, but if you just look at this one, you can see the three larger sections of this arc. Those are our conventional school zones. It happens in this case that the, the purple is the power zone, the blue is the Sand Creek zone and the green is the Falcon zone. I don't know how Falcon got their color. And then the, the smaller slices, the iconic zone. And it actually mapped really closely to the proportion of teachers that we have in those different zones. So you see there was, it's a very accurate representation. And that chart there shows you the split between teachers that would have preferred a flat rate distribution, forty-five percent approximately, and teachers that would have preferred a purely percentage. And so, kind of to Ally's comment, we could have either offended fifty-five or forty-five percent, but by following the teacher's lead and developing the fifty-fifty model, we really were able to, to create something that was both responsive, but also kind of strategic. And so, you'll see this, and, and I know you have the whole survey, which is why I'm not going to go all the way through it. But you'll see over and over, there are, there are preferences in the survey results that then appear in the proposal that Brett put in front of you. And everything that's in the proposal that's in front of you, the teacher compensation task force, which was about forty-five people, they had deep conversations about all of these elements. So I am confident in saying that there's nothing in the proposal that didn't get a thorough vetting from both the representative group of teachers and then probably an even more thorough vetting when they went back and were able to speak freely among their colleagues. And so I, I'm very proud of the work that they did to lead us to a good solution and proud to offer it to you.
I want to say thank you to all of you and please extend it to the folks that weren't, aren't here as well who served on that task for, task force. Because you're the key link and your willingness to kind of step up and speak up and be that link is what's going to allow us to continue to move forward and build that trust and to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to support you with the limited resource we have. Because I think it's very easy because the budget's a little overwhelming, right? Like you look at a hundred million dollar budget and like, well, where does all that money go? Well, you very quickly see a million dollars doesn't go super far when we look at the number of things we have to take care of and the number of people. And so, you are a critical link in that education piece with our staff and helping them understand how our budget works, what we have to allocate and what that really means once we do it. And making sure that we use the resource we have in a way that can benefit you the best. And so I appreciate your service. I know it's on top of everything you're already doing for our kids, which is already a heck of a lot. And so to be willing to serve in that leadership role and stick your neck out and be that link between teachers to admin to us is huge thank you. Anyone else have anything further? We're going to thank you, please go enjoy your summer. Not that you're not, you're certainly welcome to stay, but don't feel like you need to because I know I'd rather be in the sun myself. All right, so now we are going to go back to our legislative update with Amy Atwood and Brett Ridgway. And Amy serves as our lobbyist up at the Capitol for us.
Here's Amy.
Thank you. Amy Atwood, contract lobbyist for District Forty-nine. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening and the honor of representing the district before the state legislature. As you've heard me say in years past, the legislative session is the bookend to the year. So we are just starting the new year. We had a very successful session this year. Our work was behind the scenes and Brett's expertise with school finance and the state budget had a tremendous impact on shaping and passing legislation this year. We work closely with our local legislators and other stakeholder groups like CASE and the Rural Alliance and CASB. I'd like to highlight two bills, starting with Senate Bill Sixty-One, the Charter School Mill Levy Override Sharing Bill. This bill was heavily negotiated, starting, from the start to the finish. We actually saw this bill last year and it died and it came back this year in exactly the same form, but it was heavily amended. From the beginning, we fought for language that was very important to District Forty-nine, which was to allow the Mill Levy election that we just had to, for that language to be allowed going forward. It didn't just impact us if we ever wanted to do it again, it impacted all districts so that others can do what we have done and been successful doing. We fought very hard to get that into Senate Bill Sixty-One and that issue became other stakeholders' issues. So CASE, the Rural Alliance, CASB, it became their issue. Senate Bill Sixty-One in the end died, but it was brought back in House Bill Thirteen Seventy-Five in the very last days of session. And Thirteen Seventy-Five did pass. We were right out front in support of sharing our Mill Levy dollars with charter schools and believing that that is a philosophy that should be adopted across the state. It passed with strong, strong bipartisan support. Very few in the legislature voted against it. And we were a part of those negotiations from the very beginning, going back two years when the original bill was, was introduced two years ago. The second bill I'd like to talk about is House Bill Thirteen Forty. And this is the Legislative Interim Committee on School Finance or the School Finance Study Bill. There were two bills this year. There was one called the Visioning Bill and the other one was the School Finance Study Bill. The Visioning Bill died, but the School Finance Study Bill lived. And we were involved in shaping that bill, actually going back years. But last summer, this time last summer, Brett sat down with the proponents of the bill, the drafters of the bill, our local legislators, Representative Lundeen, and worked on drafting the language for that bill. And, and that's where working behind the scenes and really shaping school finance for all of Colorado going forward. This Legislative Interim Committee will meet for the next two years and really look at what it costs to educate a child, but also looking at the multiple factors like at-risk, size factor, cost of living, and how they are sequenced and weighted. Brett and I will both be heavily involved. Brett will certainly be running numbers for the committee and we will be lobbying the committee. But this is really a vision going forward for Colorado and how students are educated. And knowing, and you can feel very proud, that District Forty-nine was really a leader in that. And Brett's expertise with the overall state budget, not just school finance, but the state budget and how it all works together, really worked and shaped that legislation. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the discussions that have been happening and that will continue happening about rewriting the school finance formula. So you have the, the interim committee who is studying this, but you also have other stakeholder groups, some that are within education and some that are outside of education, that want to move forward right now with rewriting the school finance formula. So we will be involved in those conversations. Peter is as well involved in those conversations, keeping our eye on that, making sure that we have our input in that as well. We were, actually we just had a meeting last week on that. The state budget for seventeen eighteen will have an increase in per pupil funding for inflation and enrollment, but the negative factor will be staying flat. We went into this session thinking that we would see between fifty and a hundred and fifty million dollar increase to the negative factor, which would have pushed it over a billion dollars. The revenue forecast came in better than expected and they were able to keep, keep it flat and it's at about eight hundred and eighty million dollars. Let's see. The session also saw big bills that passed that, that do impact education as well. The Rural Sustainability Bill, or you might have known it as the Hospital Provider Fee Bill, that did pass in the end on the last day at like eight PM. And it will relieve pressure on the budget, but it's a very short-term fix. So we will still be dealing with all of that. Money went into transportation over a billion dollars. Will go into transportation from that a little bit was, will go to rural schools as a one-time. And then the hospital provider fee moves that money into an enterprise, which frees up three hundred and fifty to four hundred million dollars in the budget. So that, that will help us, but it really is a short-term fix. The referred measure for transportation, that was House Bill Twelve Forty-two, that did not pass. And that's important because of, of local elections this year, so your school board elections. There are also across the state, different three A, three Bs, mill and bonds. But the Contractors Association announced this week that they will not be putting a statewide measure on the ballot for transportation. So that is not something that is going to be driving voter turnout this fall. There are a lot of things that are going through, a lot of ballot measures that are going through the title board right now that may make it onto the ballot, but the biggie was, was transportation and we will not see that. Let's see. We are moving into the midterm election season, so you're seeing candidates down in this area that are announcing themselves, announcing their candidacies for Congress, like Senator Owen Hill will be running in the fifth congressional district. We're seeing that across the state. Things will start to ramp up. We saw quite a few come out and announce for higher office last month and this month. And then we'll see another round in mid-July, once this fiscal reporting period is finished. So we'll see a lot of buzz. There are over a dozen candidates for governor, half a dozen for state treasurer. So it'll be a very exciting election season for next year. There was one other thing that I blew past in my notes about, in the conversations about rewriting the school finance formula, this is also the discussions around Tabor and Gallagher. And so, you know, really being a part of those conversations and Brett and Peter really understand that. So when we're in a room, they certainly are, are experts when they talk about it and hold credibility. So you, you can be very confident that when they walk into those rooms, people listen to them. And also the idea that it, it's not just education that needs to be fixed, the state budget and all of revenue. It is, it is a bigger, bigger issue than just education. So the stakeholders, it really impacts all stakeholders, all ages around the state. And it'll be an interesting year and we're just starting the year. And thank you again. You know that I love representing you and it's been five years now and we have really, really shaped education policy in Colorado. Any questions?
No, thank you. I would, I would agree with you that we are, you know, in the beginnings, middles of educating legislators and those that be about the financial problems and crises that they are causing through the budgeting and all like that. That's where you come in because you're the chief financial educator. So you do educate people.
I mean, is there enough conversations? Is there a, a will being developed to face the budget issue? I mean, it's somebody, is there enough momentum building where the state's actually going to address it? Or is everybody just going to put a Band-Aid and keep moving and praying?
I think the momentum is growing. I think we saw it in the transportation bill and how many legislators on both sides supported it. You know, there was bipartisan support and there was bipartisan opposition. You know, we do have a very interesting dynamic in the Senate Republicans right now when it comes to raising revenue. But there is momentum and you have the budget or the business community starting to really put pressure. And, you know, they have a different political dynamic than say education does or healthcare or mental health or public safety or transportation. So all of those stakeholder groups are in agreement that something has to change. And so even the conversations we had last week with just education stakeholders, superintendents and other stakeholder groups, was it can't just be about education because it's the entire budget. And we need to pull in every stakeholder to make sure that, that, that's how you get it passed. Whether it is a referred measure or not, coming out of the, out of the legislature, I think would be very tough, particularly in an election year.
Do you see any challenges beyond budget and finances that may be something that we all need to be aware of, especially us? That's kind of on the horizon, anything that's coming in that could be awkward or challenging for us?
I think that we often, we're always looking out for unfunded mandates. And so legislators can have the best intentions, but then it's not funded because we, you know, we just. Because we, you know, we just, we don't have it in the state budget. So even little projects, or a brilliant idea, if it's not funded, then that can be detrimental to us. I think we are a district that supports school choice, and fighting against things that erode school choice, and also fighting against legislation that will inhibit our local control. We believe in local control, we know our communities, we know what's best for our community, and being on the lookout for the unintended consequences of that as well, taking away your local control.
I want to thank you for continuing to work with us on this. And as you said, the issue isn't even just the state budget. As local, any local tax-collecting entity will find, as our rates just got readjusted because of Gallagher, those of us who live in predominantly residential areas, our first responding groups will get less total, they will be able to get less revenue because their residential property values can only, can't be taxed at the same rate they were last year. School districts are impacted, water districts are impacted. You know, generally, your neighborhood, any neighborhood or local organization that raises any funds through property tax that is predominantly residential just took a negative hit. And we all need to get educated enough on that, that we're reaching out to those groups and working together. Because seventy-five percent of people in the state do not have children in the schools. And so if we tie it only to schools, and we only make it about us, number one, it's really not the right thing to do, because it's not just about us. And number two, you know, that would be the other group of people that are being impacted, who don't even get how they're being impacted yet, right? Education has seen it coming for a while, because our budgets are bigger. But it's going to impact everybody. And certainly this year will be a year when any organization that lives off of property tax or has a portion of their budget funded by it, who's predominantly residential, will see a negative impact this year. So I appreciate that you're starting that conversation. I know that we still have some tide turning to do with some of the other folks in education. And so if there's ways we can help, please let us know. And I also want to thank you in advance, because I know you will help us prepare for our CASB Delegate Assembly and some of the things that can be on our horizon to make sure that we're bringing up in that arena, so that we can continue these conversations and make sure that we're having the impact we need. So thank you for your help.
You know, I read with interest in the Falcon Herald that property values in District forty-nine are increasing, which is a good thing, and having a great school district helps that, and that the taxes are going down. So I found that interesting, and, you know, I contribute portions of that to District forty-nine. Also, I'm glad you covered the unfunded mandates, because, you know, that does affect us. Are we, are legislators pushing to reduce the unfunded mandates at the state and federal level at all? Or are they just ignoring them?
Well, you don't often see a repeal of something that's on the books. There is, though, part of this interim committee will also be looking at all of those, not all of them, but some of the big-ticket unfunded items. Like one ninety-one, that said that districts could absorb it and was never funded, and the impact that has on potentially pulling money from students.
I also believe in community involvement and local solutions, so I'm glad you covered that. Special needs students typically go underfunded by a huge amount. Is there any movement in the state legislature or federal legislation to meet that?
Well, that is something that we've worked on through CASB. And it is also something that Brett will push with the interim committee, is because exactly what you said, if you can relieve some of the special education costs, that puts relief on other parts of the budget. And we have had that as resolutions with CASB. We've been pushing it forward within the different stakeholder groups, and we are getting movement with that. And that is definitely one of the items that is on the checklist for the interim.
Okay. And last but not least, I know I am adding a long time to the conversation, but there's more to just raising taxes when it comes to government. There's governing correctly, and there's governing, rightsizing government. Is there any talk in the legislature to actually reduce their non-necessary spending? And focusing on the things that the government should be focusing on?
I think you have those conversations every year. Part of the Rural Sustainability Bill had in a two percent decrease in all departments. It is optional, but it's on the books. And so now there will be pressure put on that departments will decrease their budgets by two percent. I think also, we heard this at our roundtable discussion last week, was has every rock been turned over about how we can find more money that is already within the state budget? Where are their places? And until that's been done, it's very difficult to go to the voters and say that we've done everything.
And does anyone have anything further for Amy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we're on to item nine point oh two, school fees with transportation. Mr. Patrangelo.
Thank you. Jack Patrangelo, interim director of transportation. I'd like to thank you for letting me revisit this fee-for-service structure. In my last board update, I informed you that our current student scanning program changed at the start of this past school year. Those changes made it very inefficient for our staff to invoice for our customers. That program no longer summarized the number of student scans for each student, which in turn caused us to have to manually count each scan for each student in order to invoice them monthly. I am proposing that we change our fee-for-service structure, fee-for-service invoicing structure to make it more efficient for our department. Where's the next slide? There you go. So this slide shows what the current and past fee-for-service structure has been since fee-for-service inception, since we started charging for bus riding. Pretty much stayed the same since. Go ahead and go to the next slide. The slide shows that, this slide shows that, the proposal I presented at the last meeting, but I realized it has a flaw in it. And that it doesn't support our goal of making the invoicing structure more efficient for our staff. There is no incentive or savings for our customers to purchase the annual bus service shown in this plan. So this is the new proposal. I'm asking the board to approve at your next meeting. We're asking that our customers pay an upfront flat fee. As you can see, purchasing the annual pass offers the biggest savings in this structure. This semester fee obviously allows them to make two payments for the year, and the quarterly allows them to make four payments for the year, if they can't make the initial annual payment. We've also come up with a standby punch card for those students that don't ride all the time. It'll have their name and their ID on it. Bus driver can just punch it as they use it, and it's a twenty-five dollar charge for ten rides. The biggest impact on this pay structure is that it creates efficiency for our department. We're spending a lot of time counting scans. And this pay structure will not change any safety capabilities that we currently have by the scanning process. So we can locate a student at any time, as long as they have their bus pass and scan. So I know that was really short and sweet. I know you've heard a lot of this information before, and that's why I kind of kept it that way. Any questions about this?
So are we good to move this forward for approval?
Do we do any kind of stakeholder engagement with families that ride the bus?
I was thinking that after I watched the family show up here tonight. I was thinking that exact thing, and no, we didn't.
Then I'm not comfortable moving it forward. I also think for two students, a bigger savings might be, might attract people a little bit more. And five hundred dollars is a lot for some families for a year. But then again, should be a comment here that if you are free and reduced lunch, you would have...
Free reduced ridership, bus services, yep.
Yeah. So we need to make that clear as well.
And also on the fourth line there, I don't remember if you highlighted that, Jack, about the opportunity basically to spread some of those payments out. You know, so if you can go clear to the end of the first quarter, really with the ability to convert what you'd start with as a quarterly pass into an annual pass. And so that is a way you can extend that payment timeout, so it doesn't have to all be a single check upfront, if you will.
I was just going to say real quick about stakeholder, you know, our parents, understanding this new process, going through it the first time when we even started talking about fee-for-service. I think some of our thoughts in our district have changed over time, and that parents are aware that this is happening. I think giving them just the information over the summer, and getting some emails out to them would be helpful. I don't think they're going to be upset about this new program versus what we've had in the past. I don't foresee it, I'm hoping that's not the case, you know, as we move forward. So if we can do some stuff over the summer to get this information out to parents, I am comfortable personally being able to move forward, knowing that there's a plan in place to do something like that.
Okay. That's something I could follow up with, Matt?
Well, and right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fee, the date by which you have to pay to get the discounted rate is significantly later.
Yeah.
So it's actually, this current proposal in several places is an improvement. Because I believe if you wanted the annual fee rate, it had to be paid by when? I thought it was like mid-August?
It was, I believe it was the first Friday in September, is how we used to do it. We've actually extended it out to three months. If they decide, you know, if they come in and decide they just start with the quarterly, they can come in and do that by September first. But giving them the option to extend that and pay the rest of the balance for the annual gives them another month to do that.
Right. Because I'm looking at it and saying, right now, for a single student, it's a better deal than what you had. Because your option was to either buy that pass in the first month of school, which is the tightest month budget-wise, because you're paying all your other fees too, or to pay monthly. And the monthly fee was what? Remind me?
It was twenty-five dollars a month for every, anything over ten rides.
Right. And so, you know, twenty-five, that's two fifty for one kid. We're not exceeding that, I don't think. You'd still end up with the same piece. And then for two students, you're actually getting a discount of what the current rate is. It's three plus, where we're now saying, okay, there's a slight increase from what you were doing if you do the annual. And now we also have an option for some discount if you're doing it quarterly instead of monthly, right? Or am I reading that wrong? Or is that about now?
The quarterly is about the same, it's actually a little bit higher.
Okay.
We're trying to steer them towards the annual fee.
Right. And personally, I'm comfortable moving it forward as well. Do we have a consensus on whether to move this forward? I know I've got one, who wants to...
You may have a majority, but I would not move it forward. Again, even, I understand Tammy's point, and I don't disagree with it, but you have to give people a chance to speak. They have to be notified, they have to know that they can come into a board meeting and speak, you know, before a vote is even decided. I do think, because I've paid for five kids taking the bus, and it wasn't a discount like this, because it was two different families. But, you know, five hundred dollars even for three kids can be tough for some people. I would think that the more students you add, you would get a slightly bigger discount than that. But you have to give the stakeholders a chance to respond, a chance to share their concerns. Even if it's just, you know, a special meeting after July, or you do a town hall for anybody who wants to come, or whatever it is. But yes, email should be going out, not only to current bus riders, but prospective bus riders. You know, people who don't take the bus say, why should my taxes pay for the bus? People who take the bus say, why don't my taxes pay for the bus? You know, how many school districts do fee-for-service? How many don't? We have good reasons to do it. It's been a successful program. It's bought us buses, it's offset, you know, some of those costs. I think it's fair, but if you're going to change it, you got to give a reason for people to want to participate with that change, to want to be involved in that change, to not want to come here and say, I never heard it, I was disappointed. You know, why isn't the board looking out after my interest? I'm a stakeholder, I'm the community. So that's where I stand.
Is there a way in which we could accomplish communication to folks? And I mean, it sounds like it's going to be a short period of time.
That was going to be my exact question.
Because I'm curious if that can be done in order to alleviate Mr. Graham's concerns.
So I'll start by saying I agree with what Peter said earlier in the meeting in response to the Falcon Homeschool Enrichment Program families, that there's an obvious need to develop a process, a formal process, to facilitate stakeholder engagement when there are significant changes. I will say that our office is always concerned about survey fatigue. It sounds great in a meeting to say, let's give people a survey and give them an opportunity. But the amount of participation that you're likely to get, the more and more surveys you give, it does start to dilute your message. There are some other things that we can try in terms of, you know, hosting a, we could look at virtual town halls, we can use social media to ask people to provide feedback. Over the years, we've observed that during the summer, overall engagement is much lower than it is during the school year. So that's something that you should be prepared for. But as always, we're ready to support any action that you would like us to do, or any communication that the Transportation Department would need.
And I agree with a lot of your points, especially about summer participation. However, I'm not actually asking for a survey. What I suggest would be email and a push campaign, because we have, you know, we have the ability to push emails. And, you know, basically, you know, advertise basically on Facebook and our websites that this is what's happening, and this is when we have meetings, and this is when you can have your voice heard. Or participate through Facebook, or come to the working meeting, which is towards the end of this month. That way you have at least one meeting where people can speak before you have a vote, if they want to speak. Everybody may be on vacation, you know, and that's, you know, fine too. But you got to at least, we as a district got to try to reach those who have concerns, stakeholders.
Right. I would remind you that every decision that the Board of Education makes in your meetings, we do send out more than thirty-six thousand emails to our stakeholders for every decision, every action item that you vote on. So that is something that is part of our monthly workflow, and something that is given to every stakeholder we have, whether they're a staff member, an interested community member, a parent in the district. Those often average about twenty percent open rates, so people are engaging with them. We do do our best to segment our messages. So for example, if there is a parent or a staff member in a particular zone, and one of your action items impacts that zone in our email, those action items are highlighted versus something that is meant for, you know, creation of a staff member or a revised job description in a different zone. So we are doing that, but, you know, we'll continue to look at our processes, and we'll meet your request on this one and start to push some stuff next week.
Well, and that was going to be my next suggestion, was because in looking at the calendar, we have June twenty-eighth, and we have July thirteenth, right? And July thirteenth is way late for doing an action item on this item, because we're starting to sign people up for services and filling all that stuff out about July fifteenth, I think. If I remember, when I had to show up and fill out the stuff for my kids' bus passes. So it's so, and so to be able to communicate a final change, we need actionable at that June twenty-eighth meeting. But at a special meeting, we have open forum on any item that we're acting on. And so a way to meet the concern is, in the next week, we send an email that says, here is the proposed fee fee structure. Here are the reasons behind it. If you would like an opportunity to speak, here is the date and the time of the meeting where the vote will occur. And I think that that gives people an opportunity if it's something that they feel strongly enough about to come speak, but still meets the timeline because we're on a tight timeline at this point because you were asked to go back and take a look at some of the pieces um, as we were kind of transitioning, 'cause transportation has had some major transition to have to cope with. And so we had um, the slide prior to this one, we had already said, sure, move forward, right? Um, and so I don't, I, and then we said, oh, wait a minute. And so we'd already, we'd already moved that forward for a proposal of um, at a couple of meetings ago where we were talking about some of those same fees without some of the discounts. And um, so that information's been out there, but maybe not projected as well as it could have been. Um, and so I don't wanna hold you up either. And so I think that does the outreach, 'cause you're talking to, you know, that's still three weeks. If you guys can put that out over the next week with the information that lets people know, here's who to contact and here's how to come speak if you have a concern about it. And I think that lets you meet your budget constraint for publication as well. Does that, is that a sufficient compromise?
I agree with what Jack said. We took a number of live chats today about that issue, but um, historically, uh, the heading back to school really jumps up right after the Fourth of July holiday. So that timing of approving those fees, should you choose to do so, um, later this month at a special meeting, I think would would kinda juxtapose nicely with where our customer base usually starts getting into back-to-school mode, so.
And I do like your targeted emails. This item should be part of the overall board email you put out after a board. And it should also be a single topic email that goes out. And it should also identify the webpages where they can get the information and the Facebook where they can comment and any other open forums, like you just said you did today. Should at least have another one of those later before this meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
So we'll move it forward then as well, please. All right, so now we are on to the three B project update.
Uh, yeah, just to give you a a couple of additional insights, you know, from what's in the packet. Um, one of the things that we've been working with, Matt, in the communication side is very quickly, if not already, some of the schools will have the signs. There's a permanent sign that's going out, is really thanking the overall stakeholders in the in the the community for their support in three B. Um, those are in the process of getting out. We finally got the signage and a way to be able to put them up because they are permanent signs that we're gonna leave out there as well. Um, a couple of other things, if you do, you know, one of the things that's really interesting, if you happen to be out and about and uh, Mr. Graham, we're gonna give him a tour next week of of some of them, but the, a lot of the schools, you'll see that the priority two stuff is in full engagement right now. I happened to go over to Falcon Middle School yesterday and I looked at, and you know, if you would, if you'd gone over there on Monday and gone over there even yesterday and today, it's totally different. I mean, it's on a very tight schedule, but it's uh, moving forward very quickly. I wanna thank the Brett staff as well as Ron on the three B side of it in in Wimber. They've done a real good job of planning and putting it all together just to kick it off because we have a very short window. Uh, one of the other things that you'll notice in the packet is we were able to give a schedule of a timeline of all of the activities that are occurring this summer. So each of the projects that are there, it'll show when we're estimating that we're kicking it off and when we think, you know, the the best estimate of of finishing completion. So the kind of, and that same information on the signage, there's a link that Matt has that's gonna be able to link them back to this information and so they can get, basically, as we update this, they'll be able to get updates on the 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 progress of construction as well. And I also wanna thank the Peters, some of Peter's staff, uh, like mostly Brian and stuff, that really have the major impact of priority two that's going on for their support and being able to get this stuff done very quickly. Um, we're making pretty good progress on the the priority two or priority three and priority four major projects. Obviously, Sand Creek, Sand Creek, we kicked off um, this week and got it rocking and rolling. Um, soon, right behind it, uh, you'll see that Falcon High School as well as Vista Ridge High School will be, but they're gonna be later this summer simply because of where we're at in the planning cycle, so. Uh, fun summer, you know, very, um, you know, it it's a very rapid period of time, but I think it's kind of exciting to see all the transformation that's happening in the schools.
Jeff, I just had one question about these slides. What, what do the little red people mean and what do all the different little symbols mean? 'Cause I was looking for a legend, but I didn't see it.
Um, on the, this is really just, it kinda gives you an idea from a a timeline. Uh, what what you don't see on some of this is there's really like a chart that goes over onto the other side. It's more of a Gantt chart that shows you the the progress, so it's kinda constrained. You can see them right there. Some of them are on that. Will give you, um, not only that, but also gives you the timeframe of when it's gonna be. So if you had really a little bit more formatting on it, and we're working with Wimber uh, to be able to, you know, put it on their site, so we can actually format it a little bit better to be able to read it. Um, but it's really just gives you an indication of when things were planned, when they're actually occurring, and is the project on schedule or behind schedule.
Okay, any other questions on the three B update? Yay, less than ten minutes. Now we're on to the proposed budget and DAC review for seventeen eighteen school year budget.
Hello, Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer. Ron Sprentz is out tonight. Isn't that what they used to say on TV when they're when they're not in? On assignment, okay. He's on assignment at a softball game, I think. Anyway, uh, you know, if recall at the May regular meetings when you received the proposed budget, you know, at that time, we we told you that we'd be spending time between then and June twenty-eighth, getting the details fully populated into our systems so that we can pull it back out into a fully, a fully populated budget for you to consider then. Uh, that progress, that work continues. What we wanted to do at at this meeting is is bring to you kind of another step in the process, which is the DAC, the District Accountability Advisory Committee, their uh, their participation in the process. I I guess I wanna say, kinda going in, that, you know, this this obviously has been a very busy year with all of the sixteen-three B stuff. And everyone has had a lot of focus and a lot of attention on that, and I think very appropriately. And so I think that may have distracted some of the participation that we would have otherwise hoped for on regular budget things. And we still have, we still have some good. We're just not continuing to make the progress that we have hoped in the prior years, and so um, I'm not ready to to uh, to write it off or discount it all when when we, this was clearly an anomaly year with all that going on. So uh, to talk really about this, we have the David Rex, Chairman of the DAC, to hear and walk you through those those school priorities.
I don't, thanks for having me. Um, Dave Rex, the President of the DAC. We had a couple, and like Brett said, we had a lot of things going on with that, so different stuff. Um, we did get one more just the other day, but we didn't get a chance to put it on the slides up there. But uh, these are for items that the principals will come up through the zones and then also the SACS will send up through the DACS and we vote on them. And they should correlate somewhat. They shouldn't be identical, but they should be somewhere on there. And then as the DAC, we go up and give it up and present to you guys. So um, Falcon Middle School, this is what they wanna do, the special education teachers. They wanna get a Spanish teacher, amplify science curriculum and a sound system in the gym. Go to the next one, or is it over here? Thank you. Excuse me, Reading Ranch, uh, budget priorities, purchase a CKLA. Um, that's a curriculum that a lot of students or schools are doing right now. And then they also wanna do the professional development, the advantage, math recovery model. And then to continue to employ a literacy specialist to address the needs of target students. And then pursuing the purchase of a science curriculum and hands-on material to meet science standards. Pike's Peak Early College, tuition for concurrent enrollment, marker space expansion, new lease for Mac Airs and classroom technology, projectors and mounts. And then uh, Ridgeview Elementary School, they wanna do academic consumables, a CKLA, readers, Eureka math resources to include workbooks, ST math digital. Uh, you'll see some of these are were graded out, those uh, we didn't think they met the right criteria on there. So we we grade them out. We don't wanna block them out completely, but they they meet other things with with different three A, three B other programs, so that's why we left them up there. Another one is additional intervention needs, mainly personnel, add one part-time reading interventionist. And then technology, paraprofessional, general education pair to support their eye coach and building daily technology, uh, excuse me, technology needs. And then Stetson, uh, Stetson Middle School, part-time SRO, a camera face two. And then obviously the the ones that are gonna be more building stuff and then bleachers. And then Vista Ridge High School wanted space, safety equipment, materials for lab classes. Additional lunchroom seating, uh, books to build library for world language classrooms, subscription services for software to help with ICAP and career paths, soundproof dividers for blended learning classrooms. And then Woodman Hills Elementary wanted programs, math intervention, do the math, continue supportive, wonders, consumable, professional development, LET RS and adaptive schools, technology, Chromebooks and iPads. And then that was, like I said, all we've received in time to give this to the board, so. You guys have any questions about anything?
Yeah, real quick, uh, those that have more than four priorities, those are still within the amount of funding they think they're going to receive?
Uh, yes, they were supposed to.
Or is this just a priority of whatever? Okay.
It is just priority how they do it. They want to, because with the SAC, you get the students, I'm sorry, the the teachers and some of the parent members involved, what they wanna do in the principals. And it's not necessarily a budget. We're gonna give X amount of percentage, number one, two. It's just, this is what they wanna do and once they get the money, they see fit to do whichever of those ones they come up with.
I pretty much know the answer to this, just because I have been on DAC.
Yes, I'm through.
Thanks. Do you, can you explain for everybody why some schools have submitted and some haven't?
Um, it it is various reasons. Um, some of them, they didn't have meetings in time with the SAC representatives. Uh, some of the other ones had other things going on, like Brett talked about earlier, uh, with all the other things, so it's just, it's odd year. This is low. We've we've usually probably get fifty to eighty percent s- uh, schools that turn it in. This year is just an anomaly with everything going on, so, but there's all kinds of reasons we could say this or that or that. I I don't know all of the reasons why they didn't come up with.
I I think you know what I'm about to say, too. One of the challenges that I think needs to happen in, this is by and large across the board, because I appreciate you explaining, coming up from the principals through the zone and then the SACS through the DAC in that way. There's gotta be a way that's gotta connect better. And I'll speak from my own experience from our schools, that, you know, it felt like it was principal, you know, me, meaning the SAC, and that there wasn't cooperation in achieving budget priorities. I mean, my school wasn't listed, and so it kinda, there's funds available to be able to at least ask for it. There's gotta be a better way to do that. And I guess one of the challenges I have for not only administration, but also DAC is, how do we get that to, everybody's working on the same page in order to present on time budget priorities so that they can be submitted for board approval?
There has been a lot of butting heads with certain principals and stuff like that. And even Mr. Graham and I talked about it at one of the DAC meetings he attended. Uh, Dr. Fitch and I are gonna try to get, beginning of next school year, something to go up there, so we can try to make sure those schools are going on. Uh, we've asked for all the SAC dates for the schools, so we can go, the executive committee can go and step in on some of those meetings and see how it's ran. 'Cause the principals aren't supposed to take those meetings over. They're supposed to be ran by the president of the SAC, but a lot of times you hear the principals do take them over and run it how they wanna run it. So we're we're trying to get more education with that. With CDC, we had a couple of years ago come out. We're gonna try to get them to come back and and maybe run something up to just do a whole retooling of it. But it has gotten better. I've been on this for three years now, and when I first got it, it was like chaos. I mean, people with pitchforks running around, stuff like that, but it's gotten a lot better now, so.
Yeah, I remember the pitchfork days, but those are long enough to pass. It really is a pro, it really is a process thing, and we've come a long way and we were present for coming a long way, so we don't really experience how far we've come. And the next step, now that we actually are, uh, got our norming together, we're starting to point to perform, and that's the process piece. Some of the things are the asynchronous nature of the SACS, they're only statutorily required to meet four times. Our DAC meets August through June, meet through uh, May. So we gotta see if we can get more coordination with that. We've been getting more of the dates and that kinda thing. Also, we don't desire an adversarial relationship between the SAC and the principal. That should be working in unison. That's why things that come up should be uh, fairly the same. And but also, we may have to go out there, just wanna visit and do some, um, actual watching to help our learning part of that before we get back to the working piece. Is to observe what's going on and maybe we need to facilitate the relationship so they understand what it's like, because the principal may be new and not know what the SAC is like. Or maybe they've been there for a long time and have a different idea what the SAC is for. So we wanna get out there. We wanna start to mentor and model so that we can start to have better relations in that way. But yeah, we've come a long way. But I think we got a long way to go in terms of making sure that we get to the the peak performance we wanna have.
And also, when it comes in regards to uh, working together, is educating SACS in terms of what can and can they not submit? I mean, some of those are capital things that need to be referred and maybe educating the SACS in terms of what can and can't you ask for in regards to budget priorities. Uh, I, maybe that's a challenge for all of us to do, including me.
And I think because part of the DAC, I mean, the purpose of the DAC is community engagement. And by extension, the purpose of SAC is community engagement. So the DAC as a bigger body needs to go back to the SACS and have that community engagement piece. And like I said, teach each other to be able to do this in the right way.
I just wanted to uh, comment that I like the mentor and model. And I think getting everybody on the same sheet of music as to what a DAC and what a SAC is for, 'cause I had to learn that when I first came on the board, is that education piece. But it's not just educating the volunteers of the DAC and the SAC. It is educating the principals, whether they're new or just don't know, and that should come through the proper channels, chain of command. But uh, after we educate them, they, you know, they may, every couple of years, just a, you know, executive, you know, session, you know, this is what they're for, remember to use in that way. But I would expect our leadership to, you know, come up with that program, you know, now that it's working, what, three hundred times better? You know, uh, come up with that program to take those lessons learned and those best practices and just keep going at it. Everything we do in D forty-nine, we we continuously improve. It's it's just a great thing, and I know we can do that for the DAC and the SACS.
Okay, I first just wanna say thank you because what you do is completely on a voluntary basis, and we truly appreciate the amount of time you've put in. And I'd like to ask you to extend that thank you to the other members of the DAC. Um, and then by extension to the SACS, 'cause they're all representatives of their schools from their SACS. And I know um, all of it has come a long way because improving and understanding the role of the SAC, the structure of the SAC and establishing those has been um, a priority that we set through Peter a while ago, and it's an evolving process um, to be able to get all of those things online and and functioning in the way that we'd really like to see them as a best practice. And that is a struggle statewide because it is all volunteer. Um, but thank you because there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that, and I truly appreciate it.
My pleasure, thank you.
Anyone have anything further?
And for the record, John Newbill gets a lot of credit as the Budget Subcommittee Chair, too, in terms of his role in coordinating the group.
He did a lot of this stuff here. I just had to fill in for him tonight.
Yes, it's not only about engagement, it's also about accountability. That's what those A's stand for. So those of you who are general community members, we would love to have you come join some of those subcommittees and participate in that accountability process. That is what we're using to measure our Milevi override funds. And the more community members we have helping in that budget subcommittee to look at that, the more transparent that becomes to our entire community. So again, as an outreach, please consider joining that. Thank you very much. Do we have anything further budget-wise, Brett, or is that good for that one? All right, so then we will move the budget forward for action at the June twenty-eighth meeting, please. We are on to nine point oh five, Change of Student Contact Day for Capturing Kids' Hearts. Dr. Pickering.
Hi, Mike Pickering's over here in Power Zone. I have Mrs. Ritz with me, Principal at Vision Elementary School as well. And um, so we're here tonight to request a a day change on August thirty-first to a non-student contact day to be able to support a two-day training of Capturing Kids' Hearts Level Two. And I gave some, or I should say, actually, Ms. Ritz gave some good explanation of why, uh, that we feel that's aligned to both our cultural compass, the how we treat ourselves, the inner compass piece of that, as well as some strategic priorities, and as well as also some of our own zone power plant initiatives as well. And so um, really the idea, the impetus behind this is that Ridgeview has been kind of uh, called out in a pretty good way. Which about six months ago or so, they got a call from representative, uh, from the Capturing Kids' Hearts uh, representatives that said, you know what, we've been in your school and we really think that you might be a showcase school for us. And uh, and so really started to talk about, basically showcase school means that the the philosophy and the relational capacity going on at Ridgeview Elementary School is such that the company has noticed that and singled that out versus hundreds and hundreds of schools that they have across the nation. And so with that piece came a possibility of now being able to increase even more the relational capacity at Ridgeview Elementary School through a Capturing Kids' Hearts two piece, which now actually brings in this thing called Teacher Insight, which if you're familiar with Leadership Blueprint, which we've invested as a district. Um, they have kind of this leadership, they call it Traction Plan. Well, the Teacher Insight is a teacher version of that and can really help. If you've heard of anything like Immersionetics or some of these other types, it's a little bit different 'cause it really deals with personal. bit different, because it really deals with personal constraints. The whole philosophy behind Flippin', Leadership Blueprint, Capturing Kids' Hearts is that we all have personal constraints. The more that we can work on those personal constraints and lower them, the better we will be for our children and each other. And so that's the philosophy that we're trying to engage in. We don't have two other days due to some math training, other focus is the beginning of the year, so we're requesting, um, again, that that August thirty-first, which would be communicated very, very well, effectively and efficiently to families if you were to choose to approve it. Um, and that would allow us that, that two-day cycle that we need for that training. So, are there any questions around that?
Questions for anyone? Are we okay with moving this forward? So, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So move that for the twenty-eighth as well. So now we are on to nine point oh six, Job Descriptions. So, Mr. Dorsey is our first.
Good evening, Sean, Sean Dorsey, Sand Creek Zone. So, uh, before you is, uh, new job description for Dean of Workplace Learning. Uh, this leadership position really, uh, is in support of forty-nine pathways. It's our commitment to it, um, and putting resource behind that initiative. Uh, really, the, the district is at the forefront of workplace learning, um, in, in getting students out into the community. We know the graduation guidelines are changing and they're a game changer for students in how they demonstrate mastery, um, whether that be through community project, internship, mentorship, job shadowing, et cetera. And so, we really need, um, a position to support that and support our students in the community in demonstrating mastery, um, with regard to graduation guidelines going forward. The good news is that, uh, this is a, a no-new-money kind of scenario. Uh, this would be merely shifting roles and responsibilities and title with regard to current positions and not backfilling. With a position.
Is this considered a administrative position?
Uh, no, this is a TOSA.
Okay, so...
Teacher on Special Assignment.
Okay.
Sorry. No, and, and really, we wanted to complement what the district is doing. Um, we're very excited about workplace learning in the Sand Creek Zone and, and just think it has so many great implications for students.
So you'll have to come back and let us know if this is, uh, a best practice for the other zones to follow?
I absolutely will. Even if it's not a best practice, I'll come back and let you know.
That's true.
It, it will be, though. We'll be all right.
Okay, any other questions?
I just had one general question. All three of the new positions that are on here all have a salary range, adding fifteen percent to that. What, why are we doing that on these?
So, in general, the reason that we're able to do teacher on special assignment positions, generally, this is not universally true, but generally it is that the teacher contract at one hundred and eighty-two days doesn't extend on the shoulder season, so late July or, or early June. So one of the ways we can assign a position more value is by changing the number of days. So if you look at, sorry, I'm going to have to do two things simultaneously. So, for the Dean of Workplace Learning, that position goes to two hundred and twenty-five days. So that's a substantial added value to the district and we add value out of the, in addition to the license contract or the teacher position, we add that fifteen percent. That's something you can do at a school where you've got teachers, but the contrast I'll offer here is that we have, uh, an approved position by you that is the manager of workplace learning. That's a district-level position, that position has to be an administrator, and so that person is paid on the administrative contract. That position does impact our administrative ratio, but a teacher on special assignment doesn't. And the way we've, we've divided that, the decision that you all made with Paul's recommendation, is everybody paid on an administrative schedule, goes on the administrative ratio, and nobody who's not paid goes on that schedule. So that's the divider and that's why you see that, I think in all three of these. Uh, I'll discuss something unique about the, um, the Power Zone, well, actually, the Vista Ridge position when we get to that one in just a moment. Does that, does that answer your question?
So you said this was no new money?
Correct.
But it is. Seems, seems like it is.
We're shifting-
You had that okay in your budget?
No, we're shifting roles and responsibilities, um, at the secondary level to, uh, basically roll a person into this type of a position and we would not backfill this position.
Okay, so the one page says funding required, non-amount budgeted, N-A. And where it says licensed salary schedule, it'll be whatever that person's salary schedule is, but through zone funding, you will increase it fifteen, plus fifteen percent.
No, you have a recurrent dean. You have another dean position that's paid exactly is licensed salary plus fifteen percent. And instead of having that dean, you need someone who matches this job description. So, same salary range, different job description.
Correct. And if there's, if there's any incurred cost, it's obviously at the zone level.
Now, that, that explains it, thank you.
We might clarify, if we were to say to you, there is no net funding required. There is a, there is a shift of funding within the same personnel budget, so it doesn't, it doesn't affect the bottom line, but it affects the relationship between two of the columns or rows.
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 Know your spreadsheet.
All right, so are we okay with moving that one forward?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move that forward for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. And we are on to nine point oh six B, Dr. Pickering.
So the TOSA, uh, Zone Data Design is, again, I want to upfront explain the funding piece for this as well. And so right now, when I say, right, when I say it does not take additional new funding, um, I do believe that's true and let me explain why. So for the past probably, well, since twenty-twelve, the Zone has found a great, great deal of value in local data assessment and design, meaning not just analyzing data, but actually being able to design spreadsheets and visualize data and, and kind of anticipate data. And, and, and we've really, I believe, come along with it the last few years. The way that we've been accomplishing that is through, um, stipending, uh, extra compensation for a Vista Ridge High School teacher, Mr. Eric Malapart. We had done this different ways, and, um, HR could verify this, uh, different ways throughout the last few years to try to most appropriately do it. It wasn't, we weren't changing things just to change things, it was to most appropriately be able to compensate this person for what they were doing. Well, we actually had it at one time, uh, very well placed, we had thought, in a professional technical role, which is an approved job description. The unfortunate part was when, uh, Mr. Malapart got into that role, we realized that he could not teach a course or any courses at Vista Ridge High School, because now he was not in a teacher record role and could not be recorded as a teacher of record. And so then, we had to go back this, uh, because it's great value in this individual serving a couple of different roles, teaching calculus and also working in these pieces. And so finally, I believe we have come to a, a point, we will be able to decrease, uh, an amount of stipend and place, uh, this individual in a correct role, a TOSA for its own data design, and also have the ability, uh, to allow him to be a teacher of record as well, this person, uh, in this position to be a teacher of record and teach courses as well. And so that's what we're trying to do, is to, as they say, place this person correctly in, in a position that regardless of person can go with us for year after year in an appropriately, as they say, uh, position, so. Questions about that?
Any questions? Are we okay with moving it forward? Okay, so please put that on the next meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then last, Dean of Concurrent Enrollment, Mr. Gross.
I'll echo those same comments that everybody else has made previously to shorten the, my delivery. Um, kind of a unique position, uh, more of a mislabeling, uh, prior to, uh, really currently Liz Fisk serves as our Dean of Concurrent Enrollment, and so we're trying to establish a true job description of what hers looks like. We had her, uh, really salaried under just a dean position, and so we're really just changing that job description to fit the needs of really what her role is, and she's served us really well. And you can see some of the results that already have happened with her. She was the one that helped us initiate our first ascent student to graduate in District Forty-nine that, uh, completed an AA degree, uh, through the ascent, so taking five years but accomplished that. And then this year, accomplishing also the first student in District Forty-nine history to also earn their AA degree, all within that four-year cycle. And so this is really a modification, just to make sure that we have the correct job description for her.
I will say personally, I like how you stated your funding required in a non-budgeted, because I think it provided that clarity in a different way. So his says funding required, currently allocated in our staffing budget, and then tells us the exact amount of the position. That's kind of helpful for that clarity personally, I think. Um, then you don't get group, so, I don't think you would've got the same question, is my point, because of the way you phrased it, we didn't have to ask it. So, thank you.
I already, I already thank Sean for kind of leading the way for me, and so, yeah. I said, thank you, Sean, setting that up perfectly for me. He said, just, just put it in, it's a three-foot tap.
All right, are we good for moving that one forward? All right, let's put that on as well. Thank you very much. And we are on to nine point oh seven, Policy GCBA Instructional Staff Contracts Compensation and Salary Schedule. Mr. Anderson is not here. Um, so I believe you're gonna-
Well, this is-
-briefly explain, but I think we've ta, oh, this is the one we're just doing the reread, right? So this policy is one we did an emergency approval on, um, that allowed us to take care of making those extra-year offers, and now we have to go through the, um, to read, um, to then do it. And we did an emergency approval so that they could make offers according to what the change that we were going to make, um, and our offers and contracts we were making, you know, last month and this month, so...
Yeah, and just to refresh that, this is something I was endorsed by the Teacher Compensation Task Force as well, uh, as, as a change that they would like to see happen, so. It's just kind of a short tweet, but a, but a highly impactful change, really.
Right. This is, this is a huge piece of that attracting, um, piece for bringing folks into the district, so that we stay competitive in bringing in people who are experienced. So, uh, we'll move that forward for final approval. We are on to item nine point oh nine, Chief Officer Team Performance Process Review.
So I think I'm going to take the lead and we're actually going to remain sitting over here, because then we can, um, we can all three interact with you, and I'm going to try and take over the airplay right now, Mr. Meister, and we'll see if that works. And the problem with me taking it over up there, I think it does not appear on your TV down here, is that correct?
Oh, did?
Oh, did? Okay, great. So, the, the, the system that you're seeing in front of you is the Cascade system. And so as, as we've discussed previously, we want to move to Cascade for goal setting and for goal tracking. And so in the Cascade system, I'll, I'll remind you, I know that not everyone has seen this in depth, but I'll remind you that Cascade is a software system and you're looking at our live implementation, at least you will be when I log in. This is our live implementation and this is the way that we are starting to work with Cascade together and in our individual offices and departments and schools, zones and units. We are able to set goals, we are able to have those goals be combined into, into plans, we can set sub-goals and tasks beneath those plans, and it's not nearly as interesting as that's, okay. So, the high-level view that we have shown you before is what we are calling our District Forty-nine Peak Plan. And so the top layer there that, that see, that you see that appears in green is our vision and mission. The best choice is our vision, to learn, work and lead is our mission. And then the rainbow row, right below the vision and mission, is our district's priorities. So you see, cultural priority one is how we treat each other, that, that's the inner ring of our cultural compass, cultural priority two, how we treat our work and our workers, but how we treat our work is the outer ring of our cultural compass. And then the big rocks are our strategic priorities, number one, preserving enduring trust, engaging our community, portfolio of schools and the performance of that portfolio, portfolio, firm foundations and launching every student to success. So that's all very familiar. And in our model of Cascade, it's actually the second row where we will align all of our chief officer work and then the, the programs and units that we lead, uh, that we support will be aligned, they will all have the same seven district priorities. Where they will not be aligned purposefully is at the top level, the Statement of Purpose and Intent, SOPI. That's language that, that works really well from the business office that we're adopting district-wide. So the top level will be unique to each office, unit, zone, school. And then these left column, it, at the district level, this left column, colorful column, maps exactly to our priorities, so the blue to the blue, the purple to the purple. So this, this initiative here is the initiative of community care, and you've heard us talk about that and you'll hear some more in a minute. Community care is the application and implementation of the priority on how we treat each other. So cultural priority one comes to life through an initiative called community care, and then community care comes to life through action plans, goals, tasks, et cetera. So that's the high, high-level overview. And what we have done in our chief officer performance review planning is we have each taken our office and, and set up goals. So what I'd like to do is start with Jack, and I'll just display his on, on screen, and he can talk to you about what the goals are for himself and for the office that he, that he supports. So you can see he has a different SOPI, same priorities, and then he's got different action plans than you might find in the business or operations office. Do you want to talk him through?
Yeah.
You just tell me what to scroll and I will-
Yeah, really, and when you look at the, one of the things that we've been meeting with the, our various directors on is really trying to roll this out, and it's really kind of exciting in some ways, you know, I think some, a lot of us are getting this training with a fire hose, but, um, now that we're actually using it, it's, it's actually a, a really neat tool, because it, one of the neat things that we've learned about is it does align all of the work activity that we're doing, not only with our strategic goals, but also with our various initiatives. And so, as you can see, our SOPI, which is our Statement of Purpose and Intent, is why do we exist as an operation unit? And so what we came up with, it says, you know, and there's, there's some key words in there, it says provide industry-leading operational support. Industry-leading means that we want to be among the best, and that, that fits with our desire to be a best choice to learn, work and lead. Um, the other thing is we want to be able to provide the support services. We, we were trying to come up with, and Peter's great at this, coming up with acronyms and things like this for, I mean, Brett has BOLT and, and we're still trying to figure out a little bit of the nuances of that, but we wanted to say that really what our, our intent is, is to provide, um, superior operational support with great customer care and communication as well, you know, with all the stakeholders and collaboration. So that's, that's really how that came about. The next set of it really is looking at the various levels of, one of the things in trying to align it with, um, you know, the various strategic initiatives, um, and you'll see that some of them are aligned to multiple areas. And in one case, we have one, climb with our community, um, and then what we want to do within the school dude concept, because we're able to measure how do we do our business in the facility side and now the IT side, how do we match up against our peers in K-12 education? Well, we've been able to reach a milestone of being what they call a campus champion, that we're in the top twenty of six hundred, or six thousand five hundred school districts across the United States. Well, now that we've attained that, we actually have two goals. We want to maintain that, but then we want to reach the peak level, because right now we've heard that we're really operating in the top fourteen percent of school districts across the nation in the area of facilities performance. So, you know, we've challenged our group now to say, hey, we just need to move four more percent and then we'll be in the, in the peak, the peak level performance. So it's, it's really kind of neat, and one way is it's a fundamental change on how they're doing business at school dude, uh, because they've decided now, hey, that makes sense, you know, why don't we just move that bar, if you, you know, we'll let you be a campus champion, but then if you really want to move on to become a peak performer, then we'll, we'll give you that measurement. So that's one of the, you know, the things that we've done in the facility side. Another area that we've come up with, if you look at where it says equip and encourage, is one of the things that is really important to us is making sure that we're equipping and encouraging our staff where they have leadership training, uh, if opportunities, they have some training opportunities in their specific areas, and they also have, you know, whether it's team building, whether you use the Flippin' training, various things like that. So, you know, within, uh, there, what we're saying is, we need to have at least three opportunities in every operating unit for opportunities to have, for provide some sort of support in the area of training. And so what's nice about this is, this, as I've learned today, I, a little bit of nuances of how do you share a goal? Because this one exists, you know, at the level, it's, it's an initiative that I have within the operations, but, um, in order to perform that, it has to go down to the individual components, nutrition services, transportation, facilities, uh, in David's world and, and security and safety. So, you know, now you, we can take this and now it becomes a co-owned goal by the various directors. So they're now in- So there now, and one of the neat things that we have, that we're in the process of doing now is beginning to roll it out into the various tasks and sub-goals. And I'm just learning some of the nuances as well of how does it cascade? And how do you put some of this stuff in there? But, so, in each case, and the other aspect of it that Brett shared that I'm struggling with a little bit is, you know, the trying to transition from the performance evaluation metrics that we had from last year's model to also rolling it into within this model. And so that's really what we've done. One of the other major initiatives for Ron is really, and you see, it's one of the few that's in green. And it's really an efficient and effective rollout of the 3B Capital Campaign. And the green indicates that it is on its, you know, it's on its cycle for success. The other ones basically mean that they have not been implemented yet. Most of them are actions that are gonna occur in the new fiscal year. One of the other things that we really want to do, and we've been having discussions about this, is coming up with a systematic process for really new project initiation. Or, you know, and not only in that area, but also in the same area of budgeting. One of the things that we've been looking at is turning up with some sort of way where we can have a systematic process to bring forth a new budget every year. And, you know, we've been working a little bit with Brett's staff to be able to do that. And since, you know, in the support side of it, we want to, at least at some point in time, come up with a zero-based budgeting. And are we ever gonna get there, you know, but at least what we want to do is start the process. We've been doing it now for the better part of three years. And really what we want to do is now take that process and roll it into a systematic process that ultimately feeds Brett's staff our budget, at least for preliminary review. And so that's one of the other things that we want to be able to do with that. One of the things that I really, and then another thing that I'm working, I want to collaborate with Peter, and this is exciting for us, is to develop an apprenticeship program in the areas of the trades, in HVAC trades. I mean, right now, we are struggling in a lot of areas just to be able to get applicants to be able to come on for summer help. It would be nice for us to be able to utilize our students that really want to earn some additional income, learn some additional insight about various trades, to say, "Hey, is this something that I really may want to do?" And so we've created a goal in collaboration with Peter's Education Office. And as soon as we get that position on board, we've already had some discussions with School Dude about being able to certify, give us, you know, certificates and stuff that they have completed that progress. And so that's kind of an exciting one that really didn't think too much about it, but it really has some tremendous implications, not only on the students, but also our ability to provide additional opportunities for them to learn, but also augment our workforce to be able to get things done in periods of time when we really need to get them done. So that's kind of a brief overview on, you know, what you see in ours. I think it's gonna be as we roll this out between now and over the next couple of weeks, because I think we're actually launching this July 1. So we're in the process of, I think we've got in our office, you know, two additional trainings. We had one today kicking off some of this stuff. I finally figured out how to approve my own staff's goals. I do have to compliment the folks at Cascade. They're very responsive, very customer service-driven. I must've had a complete dialogue with Nick that had been here before all day. I had a conversation with Peter, appreciate his support. Because the neat thing about this is, once it's done and we're able to learn how this works, it basically aligns all of the work that we're doing within our various components of operating units with what we're doing on our strategic strategies. And that's kind of a neat thing to be able to, especially being a former RIMPEX examiner, you can see now how highly, or high-performing organizations actually do their work. And that's what this is really leading to.
So let me point out something real quickly as I switch to Brett. You'll notice on the left column down at the bottom here, this blue and this uniquely red and blue set of initiatives. Those are unique to the operations office. So there's communication and collaboration that's kind of fuchsia on my screen, and then systematic process and procedure. So, as you're about to see in Brett's, this left column might differentiate by office, unit, zone, et cetera. But this top row, the priorities at the district level, doesn't change. That's the one that sticks across the whole system. So what Brett just handed you is his plan, and I'll show you what it looks like on screen while he talks that through and maybe directs me where to scroll.
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide you a way to kind of translate and point of reference to where we have been last year. And so what I handed you out was the measurable performance targets that we had in last year's goals for my performance. And so I've translated these onto Cascade now. And as Peter mentioned, all of the seven priorities across the top you see are the same, but you see on the tops of the screen here, the SOPI that is the business office SOPI, Statement of Purpose and Intention, and that's the short-form version of it, providing stewardship, customer service, and communication through and with our business team. From that SOPI, the way that we have chosen to choose and to proceed is to derive our initiatives then from that, from that SOPI. So you see stewardship, you see customer service, and you see communication, those being the three points that we highlighted in the SOPI, then becoming the three initiatives here. Then the green, the green items here to the right of each of those, again, will show you the translation from that paper version that you have, that we had last year, to what we have on screen now. So, so if we go to the second one, the second initiative right there, deliver appropriate financial performance there on that paper I've shown you, number two is the overall district financial performance. So that is basically the translation of that. You see the sub-points there of A, B, and C about general fund span management, general fund fund balance, et cetera. Those now being translated into goals right here. So where, right where, right where the cursor is here, you see, where'd it go?
Put your finger where you want it.
Okay, it's a Mac.
So sorry.
Yeah. So we have, you know, deliver audit results, that's number three. Audit results and the sub-points there of reflection of the business office process, deliver no more than one to two business office comments per year. Okay, so though, again, those things that we established as the performance goals there on paper being translated exactly into this, into this format here. This happens to be on the business, chief business officer plan. On the upper right is where we make our selections for that. And then there will be individual plans, there are individual plan templates set up for the major units within the business office then, so human resources, finance, accounting, even the technology, quality assurance that we've just started, you know, so we're kicking that off in this process as well. And so some of these goals also, if you go to the, if you go to the first one there, Peter, you will see I have, we have, if you can see that, it's a Ron Srenson and Jim Rohr goal that falls into the business office overall project.
And, and there's a great example here in the business office plan where under this first plan, which has multiple goals in it, delivering the annual budget, there's a finance and accounting sub-goal. And so that FA language tells us the specific unit that it's attached to. So that's, what we're seeing here is just a very substantially higher level of linkage between the different things that we do. And so in the world of performance excellence, we call that alignment. So in the chief office, the chief education officer plan, I chose to stay with the same set of, I chose to stay with the same set of priorities. So my colorful column out here is the same seven initiatives that match up with the district's plan. And the reason I did that is because all of the zones and schools are aligning to the priorities, and all of these, all of these initiatives have a home in the education office. It doesn't mean we're the only home, but we are a home. And so for the education office, the plan that we've put together that's available to you is, has at least one plan per initiative. So for example, for the community care plan, I'll focus on that one, and then I'll zoom in on that one. So for, for this initiative of community care, we have a plan to launch a community of care plan, and under that, we have two sub-goals. One is to create a process for a cycle of care. What that basically means is you have a need for care, and then you prepare to care, you provide care, you reflect on the care that you provided, and then you improve the care going forward. So it's a continuous improvement cycle. Well, we want to work on that and spell that out. And if I were to drive deeper into this goal, you would see that it's a goal that I co-own with Kim Boyd as the Director of Community Care. So we've never had a way to track that before. And I know we have always been concerned about how are we doing it delegating? And then when we delegate something, when we hand something off, do we know if it really got carried out? Well, now we're gonna, we're gonna be able to track it. And I think you're hearing from all three of us enthusiasm and a recognition that we still have a lot to learn. And those are decent places to be as we're getting going. What we're asking you to do as a board is approve us walking forward using Cascade and this model to represent our goals. And in order for you guys to access our goals in their dynamic state, we have to make all of you users, and we have to give you the highest level access because that allows you to look down through the whole organization. And I'm gonna finish by showing you why that will be helpful. This is another tab. Now I'm outside of the plan, but I'm into a tab called engage. And what this does is it shows you how are we using the system. So for example, here's a graph of the last three months that shows a significant spike. Well, that's because we started doing training at the end, in the middle of May, and then we had our big formal kickoff training on the 5th of June. And so you would reasonably expect a spike. But down below, you can see, we've already written 218 goals. And I would expect that number is gonna end up north of 1,000. That's not all new work. That's work we were going to do anyway, but now it's trackable. And if you look at the number of goals, so these column headers that are kind of hard to read because of size, I'll try and pump them up. Not only can I see the number of goals, but I can see the percentage of alignment, and so you will be able to do that as well. And in my case, I have the option, and I'm gonna do it right now. I can look just at the people that I supervise, the system calls them direct reports, and I can see that Amber has five goals, that every one of her goals is aligned to a priority. So we have 100% alignment. I can see that she was on the system five hours ago, so there's a little bit of oversight and tracking available. I can see where Andy Franco has four goals. So you can see, you'll be able to look at the chief officers, and you'll be able to see that we are or are not aligning our performance to the priorities that the district has and the initiatives that you've set. So that's what we wanted to present to you. What questions might we be able to answer? Is this gonna limit your performance reports to under 200 to 300 pages? As long as you're willing to log onto the system, Mr. Graham. But fair warning, we'll be able to tell if you've logged on or not. And the Board of Education already has goals built in here. I could filter to your goals that Donna has put in as a user. And so, not to be cavalier, it is our intent to go from, in the case of the education office, you currently get a 20-page PDF. We want to draw that back to four or five pages with references to the Falcon Zone, the Individualized Education Department, the Communications Team. Cal has great goals developing. So we'd rather put them in here and have them be live than have them be static. Initial show metrics. Yes, sir. All kinds of metrics.
One thing to just add, what Peter just said, one of the neat things about it is this is things that, you know, as we prepare for our, you know, the evaluation that we're doing and being able to submit it, it's actually already done for us because it's all built into here. Where before, we were doing additional work, even though we did it, and then just being able to compile it to be able to provide it to you. The nice thing, like Peter said, it's already here. And so if we're doing the metrics and everything else we're doing, we're just gonna be able to assemble it within this, the body of Cascade.
And although your categories or goals may change, it'll be mostly a standardized format. Good, excellent.
Well, and we will be able to, so, you know, as we work with the liaison system that we're still developing, that'll let everyone kind of check in. So if you have a concern about a specific area, or you're the liaison who's supposed to be kind of helping prepare things with the board, we can go into the system, we can monitor where we are in those things. We can then ask questions if we need to on pieces of it. So the system's gonna give us a better way of looking at those things. And at this point, you're not looking, all you're looking for is direction from us that, yes, we like this. Because obviously, we can't even read into the plans to say, "Hey, we, you know, we like how," we can't give you feedback on specific goals.
Right. You can't read them.
Right.
And so Donna and I will work together to give you all access. And then we're probably going to have to have a training session, a work session, so it's noticed. It doesn't make sense to try to do it five times one-on-one. But then, as you meet with your chief officer, as liaisons, chief officers can orient you increasingly to the system as we become oriented to the system.
No, I think this is a lot of potential. Thank you. Any further questions on that? All right, then we are on to our last item. So there is a three-page document that you guys have that Donna has been working on for implementation. And the question is, the thing she has on the third page, would we like those added to our November orientation list? And it, to me, they all look like, so there's a set of documents and then some of the things to be included in the conversation with the mentor or board president. And I believe Dave and Tammy are beta-testing all of this for us because Tammy has agreed to be Mr. Krusen's mentor as a part of our process so that we can have this fully developed by November election time. So just based so far on what you've seen, I kind of like these things. Anyone else have other feedback on it? Go on ahead.
I, I've been looking at it extensively, taking my role seriously. I know you're surprised, but I, I do like a lot, I like a lot of what's on here. As Dave and I talked about it, there might be a few things to add, but I think this is a great start.
So in other words, your feedback is add all of these things, and as you two work through the process, there may be a few more?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have feedback? All right, so Donna, please add all of those things. And then as we walk through the process, they'll have some more feedback for us. And, you're awful, John. All right, so, and with that, we did our conversation in 30 seconds. Anything else we need to add? All right, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote.
Butcher?
Aye.
Krusen?
Aye.
Graham?
Harold?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:03.